Item 10, Comments to the Board by any citizen registered to speak to the board.
Mr. President, we have four people registered to speak to the board. And before we start this tonight, I know we've got a good crowd, we've got a strong topic of discussion tonight that is a common thread with all four speakers. One thing that we will, we need to keep these to three minutes apiece, and I've shared the policy with, it should have been shared with you when you signed up as well. And just keep in mind, be mindful of that policy and the topics to avoid during the, and the fact that the board cannot respond to your comments, but welcome. And so with that being said, the first speaker will be Mr. Brian Dearing regarding teacher pay and walkout. Mr. Dearing?
I humbly ask for your support. My name is Brian Dearing. I'm a teacher at, I'm a teacher going on 17 years. I got my start working with the dedicated youth in the state of Rhode Island. I first saw the first steps to education firsthand in 2002 with no child left behind. At this time, my wife and I decided to move back to Oklahoma. I showed my wife pictures of Oklahoma's first capital, the beautiful city of Guthrie. We decided to move here. I moved my, I moved back to the state where I was born to raise my family and find a teaching job. I have currently been at Guthrie Junior High for the past 13 years, teaching United States history from 1754 to 1877. In those 13 years, I have taught 2,470 students, coached 1,005 students and student athletes. I've sponsored over 500 students and have been responsible for over 9,425 students during other duties as an educator in Guthrie, Oklahoma. In those 13 years, I have seen the state legislature of Oklahoma make cuts to education funding so drastically that a subject that I teach has now gone from a year-long course to a semester-long course, so that the tested subject class size can have an unreasonable class size of 30 or more in a building that was built in 1921. As a professional who has a bachelor's degree in history and a master's in education, let me walk you through a portion of the historical document that rings true today. We hold these truths to be self-evident, so, I messed up. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the government, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to, as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. I hope it does not come to a teacher walkout, but Oklahomans, make no mistake, the teacher walkout has been happening for the last 10 years. The turnover rate at Guthrie Junior High since I have been there is unacceptable. Students need consistency. Teachers have been walking out to go to different states to teach for better pay. Teachers have been walking out for higher pay, less stressful jobs. Teachers have been walking out in earlier retirement because of unreasonable and unrealistic expectations. Future teachers have been walking out of university prep programs to other less demanding high-paid jobs. I've taught beside some of these teachers, and they have been some of the best in the world, who've cared so much about, so, who they've cared so much about their students that they all have to leave after two to three years for higher-paying jobs, which correlates to why our state is ranked 50th in teacher pay. I again say to you, students need consistency. It is now time to pay those teachers that have not walked out. If the legislators don't step up and do this now, the walking out will continue. It just won't be as organized, but it will be much more catastrophic. We as professionals, we as teachers, for our students, for your students, for your children, we all call on the Board of Education, this community, and Oklahomans to stand up for education for the future of our state of Oklahoma. I leave you with the following statement I posted on social media the other day. A teacher's working condition is a child's learning situation. Never forget that.
Thank you, Mr. Dearing. Next to speak will be Kim Barrett. Ms. Barrett?
Good evening. My administration from the high school, upper administration, and my friends on the Board of Education, thank you for allowing us this opportunity. Every August for the past 13 years, I've walked into the Hallwood halls of Guthrie High School and signed my name to a contract agreeing to work X number of days for X amount of money. And I want you to know that I have every intention of keeping my word to that contract. Please be confident in knowing that if I take a sick day on April 2nd, it's not about me or about my contract with Guthrie Public Schools. I'm perfectly content driving my 1997 Mercury Cougar until the wheels fall off. If I take a sick day, it will be for my kids. My kids deserve much, much better than what the state of Oklahoma is giving to them. Maybe, just maybe, if my kids had textbooks that were current enough to cover all of the material they're expected to know on state tests, maybe their scores would be higher. Maybe if my kids had class sizes small enough to receive the one-on-one attention that they so richly deserve, classroom experiences could be better. We could have Socratic seminars where we get to sit and visit instead of just cramming dates and knowledge into their head and expecting them to regurgitate it when we call for it on a test. My kids should not have to pay to enroll in remedial classes at the college and university level because they have not been properly educated with textbooks and technology while they're here in the schools in Oklahoma. And lastly, maybe, just maybe, if my guidance counselors had time to guide and counsel my students instead of being schedulers and testing coordinators and transcriptionists and secretaries on the days that the secretaries probably sit, maybe, just maybe, I would not have buried seven of my children last year. And maybe I would not have had to hold my own daughter in my arms and explain to her why five of her classmates from the class of 2015 have came in their own lives. My friends, my Board of Education, my support, my people that I work with, should I take a day, a sick day on the 2nd of April, it will not be because I'm looking for more pay, I'm looking for more for my children who so richly deserve it.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Next to speak is Michelle Reedus. Ms. Reedus?
Good evening. Hi, my name's Michelle Reedus, and I've been in this district for 20 years, and I have seen quite a lot of changes in Oklahoma education, not always just for the better. And now they've gotten worse. I've had three children, my two, I've got one already out, and two, they're coming up through Guthrie High School, into high school. And what I've seen over the last several years is I feel like we've been abandoned, and our children and our schools across the state have been abandoned and ignored for way too long. When I have, my niece and nephew in Texas do have abundance and can run struggles around my own kids, and they ask, why do they know so much? That's because the investment is greater down there than it is up here. So when I walk out, which I don't want to have happen, and I'm hoping, I want the community to understand that a stoppage is not the goal at all. We want a certain solution. We do not want to abandon. We want a permanent solution to this problem. And it's a problem which can be fixed. What it takes is a group of individuals who care. We care. This is personal to us. We have to take what's personal to us, to the people on Lincoln, and make those that don't understand how personal this is. We all have a vested interest, and it's our kids. I told the people in my building that a raise is awesome. That's per, that's right. But the best investment that you can make in the state for our kids, those are the ones that need the raise. I just hope that the community understands that when the teachers of the 77 counties raise their hands, their fists, and they say, "We want more," it's not that we necessarily want more in our paycheck, it's that we want more in our classrooms. We want more for our kids. These aren't students, these aren't numbers, these are our kids. And I would take a bullet for those kids. Those are my kids. And we all understand that. But we have to make everybody understand in our communities across the state as that this is about their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reedus. The final speaker tonight is, from the audience, will be Ms. Kathy Ices.
Okay, I was not going to talk, and this was like the 11th hour of the meeting, but I just thought, well, you know what, you've spoken to a lot of kids, and you've inspired a lot of kids, but this inspire adults is not my forte, so I'm going to give it to the best try I can, but, but kids, I, all day long, but adults, I don't know. Okay, it says, and I'm going to read it. It says, "Good evening. Many of you know the story of Lorax. He was an eccentric little dude that spoke for the trees. I'm going to try to repeat his passion and say, 'I am the 77 strong that speak for the teachers.'" It's Lorax. Y'all know Lorax? Yeah? Okay. And I've heard over and over the past few years, and this is going to probably sound way off that I'm saying this tonight, but I've heard over and over, is what you're doing in the best interest of the kids. Well, I'm going to tell you something. What is in the best interest of our kids is that we have a passionate, we have a dedicated, and we have a teacher in front of that classroom that is there every day and shows up and teaches those children. Every day, through everything. We've stood up and we've been there, every day, through a lot, a lot. And I guess, and I don't know, a lot of you guys have heard, I'm leaving. I just want to say, if Oklahoma continues, and my husband got, is having to leave for, he applied, couldn't get on in Oklahoma, so we're leaving, and I'm going to go with him, and he knows this is probably one of the hardest things to do, because I know this is going to be my last two or three years, and I'm going to leave. And I have spent my life in this little district, come and gone, come and gone. This is where my home is, this is my home, I'm Guthrie Blue Jays. But anyway, if Oklahoma continues to offer salaries that do not compete with neighboring states, we are at the risk of losing some of our best teachers. And that is a fact, that's a fact. They do not leave because they are greedy, they leave because they have needs and hopes. They have kids, they have parents that are sick that need medication, they have health needs themselves, and God forbid that they have a dream of retiring comfortably. I'm not here to defend my leaving, I'm here to defend and prevent others from leaving. My husband and I raised our daughter here, from kindergarten to the 11th grade. We had to leave and take her in the 11th grade because of the situation where once again we had to go where we've been on the salary. We have and we will always be Guthrie Blue Jays. This district has some of the most remarkable teachers anywhere in the United States, and I've been to quite a few states. Though I have had a few periods of reservations sometimes about administrative decisions, our administrators have kept the lights on, they keep the heat pumps, and have taken a lot of serious knocks over the years to keep things going, and I appreciate that very much. Recently, you've gained a lot of my respect. The principals across this district, they have worked diligently to keep the environments of learning going, they've kept teachers feeling like family, we've always been like family. Robbie and Mr. Rainwater, you're one of the most dedicated men I've ever seen to the cause. And the board, I want to say something to you. Over the years, I've seen a lot of dedicated citizens, a lot, a lot, a lot of dedicated citizens serve these chairs. And I'm telling you, you have got to understand, when we make our statement, you have to be behind us. You've got, you've got some of the best people in this society out there that are going to go out there and make a difference. They are what make a difference in children's lives, these teachers, every day. And so please stand behind them, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ices.
Item 10B, if we have any comments to the board by board members?
I'm going to start over here, where? Okay. I'm glad to see all of the turnout that we had tonight. I've sent my children to the school district, I see some of her current teachers in some of her past, and some of her favorite. And I want to express that this Board of Education, in the hearts of everyone that I've met and worked with on this board, supports the teachers, the men and women in this classroom tonight. I'm kind of surprised you haven't walked out before. And if it's just one day you're worried about, I don't know if the people with the IQs of a Bartlett pair in Oklahoma City are going to get it after one day. They seem to want to pay theirselves, ranked about 13th in the country, but they want our teachers to be paid at 50th. I assure you that every member of this board will ensure there will be no retaliation, no recourse taken on any teacher that decides for their family, or themselves, or their children, that they need to make a stand. I think when you look behind you, you'll see every one of these board members and all of these administrators probably standing somewhere pretty close to you. And I'm thankful for what you do tonight, I'm thankful for what you do every day. My daughter is one of the most important things in my life, and she, I trust her in Chris's hands and your hands every day. And I'm very proud of you. And I would not take what you have taken, I would not stand for what you have stood for. I appreciate what you do, and I pray that the legislators in this state that are catering to large, big oil and other interests see the importance of the teachers. And the only way you're going to do that is if every man, woman, of voting age in the state of Oklahoma calls them or stops spying season. So I want you to know that I'm in full support of every teacher in this room and everyone that works in this district, no matter what they do or how they do it on April the 2nd, as long as they respect others, respect each other, and respect this district. Thank you.
I don't want nowhere to begin other than to say, you should be mad, you should be upset, and so are we. This is a great place, Guthrie, Oklahoma, I love this place, I love our school district. And I'm mad, I'm mad at our legislatures for what they've done, but they're not the ones to blame. The current ones aren't the only ones to blame, the past ones are. We, the people, are for electing them. And so we all have to take some blame in where we are in our state today and how we're going to improve it, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I know the money won't be there tomorrow, no matter what we do. But I want to say, for the teachers, you all are so important, so is our support staff, so are our administrators, because look what you do for those kids. Not only do you educate them, they come to you because in many places, you're their parents. You're that pat on the back, or that mentor, you're that hug, you're that only safe place they have to go. And we recognize that and appreciate that, appreciate all you do. Done some marvelous things educating some really great people. I'm from generations of Guthrie-educated people, and we've done all right in our lives. And I say thank you so much for that. My heart goes out to the parents because they're part of my constituents too. Teachers are, the parents are, and they're going to have, they may have a day, whether it's April 2nd or if it's longer than that, that they got to figure out what to do with their kids. And my heart goes out to them too, because they got a problem too, because they have a job to go to, that they may have to take time off from their job too. But most of all, my heart goes out to the kids, because that's why we're all doing this, is for those kids. They're the ones that are suffering the most. They're suffering the most because we're losing great educators, we're losing the people we need in here, we're losing those people who are acting on their daily life as the mentors, the influence that is probably the best thing that's happened in a lot of them's lives right now. They might miss out on a good day of food, the only food they might get for that day. So when it all comes down to it, the kids are what matters the most. And I hope that the legislators find a way to make sure they remember how much those kids matter. Dr. Simpson, we've put you in a position, you're the leader, this board has put you in the leadership role to run this district, and I have trust and faith that you're going to do what is right for our school district, and I say thank you to you too.
Okay, I'm going to try and get through this without tearing up, and I'm probably not going to succeed. Because there's so many people that I look at these faces in this room, and you have impacted my life because you've impacted my children's lives, my grandchildren's lives. So I'm going to read a statement that I wrote, because I don't wing it very well when I'm It says, "With the current state of our legislature and their inability to work together to find a means of funding our public schools adequately, I wholeheartedly support your choice to walk out of the classroom on April the 2nd. I completely understand the impact that the walkout will have on our support personnel, our children, our parents, and the community. But I believe we are at a breaking point to get the attention of our legislators and let them know that we as a state and those that they represent will no longer stand for their unwillingness to work together to find a resolution. This is not just about funding a teacher pay raise, it's about providing the necessary continued funding that our teachers and districts need to provide a quality education to the children that they care so deeply about. It's about new textbooks, current technology, smaller class sizes, a well-lit classroom, school buses less than 10 years old, as well as many, many other daily items that are needed to complete an education and carry these children into the future. It's time to let our teachers and children know that they are so much more important than partisan politics." Again, I cannot thank so many of you, every one of you, so much for your dedication to our district and to our children. And, yeah, thank you, that's all I can say.
I shall go next. Guthrie Public School teachers, you are more than just educators. You are caring compassionate people who work together no matter what the situation, and we've been through some pretty tough ones lately. However, I feel your frustration regarding the low pay you receive, it's just not right, considering what all you do, and you do it all. You educate and care for our students and prepare them for the future, for when you educate, you are giving them the future, you're putting it in their hands so that they can go forward and succeed. And for that, you are owed a great debt. You've done this work tirelessly for many years without a raise in your salaries, which is something that cannot be ignored any longer. I'm on this board to help our children, our teachers, our district, and our community. And I stand behind you, teachers, in your endeavor to educate the legislature, that the time is now. Thank you.
I'm going to stand up, since I'm short and I can't see everybody. The last month, when we had the Teacher of the Year, we had several videos that came up, and it was, it was touching to my heart, because there was bits and pieces in all of those videos that fit every one of you in this room, and the teachers that are not in this room. We know, before all this came to head, you could have got better pay at Deer Creek or better pay at Edmund, that you chose to stay in Guthrie, and why? Because it is a unique community. You have teachers who have been here, and now they're teaching some of their first students kids. And what it feels like when you go to Walmart and you see that kid that is now 25 years old, and they hug you and they say, "Thank you for being a great teacher." And you do that out of your heart, you do that because that is the most gratifying thing you can get in life, is whenever another human being thanks you for what you have done for them when you really didn't know what you did for them, but you touched them. And we just, we appreciate your dedication, your love for our community, and our love for our children. We put, Kenny and I put four kids through this school system, and they, well, Luke is teaching at El Reno, ran into Ms. Wilker's, Mrs. Ogil, and went up to her, and he was so excited to get to see her again. But it's, it's that love that you instill in these kids, and then you have kids who say, "I want to be a teacher one day." What a great compliment, you are instilling that into them to want to be something that you're thinking in the back of your mind, "No, you don't." But we thank you, we thank you. And we are saddened that it's come to this point where you do have to walk out, and that you do have to take a stand. And it is sad, it is sad as a mother to see that, as a board member to see that you have to do this. But we support you, we understand. And even though it's hard for you to say, "I'm not coming to work on April 2nd," it is something that we have to do in order to get their attention. If they had to live on your salary, they would immediately vote you a pay raise. That's what it would come down to. But we appreciate you, we love you, and we thank you, and we support you.
I guess I'm up. I can't even imagine what you guys do on a daily basis, the challenging environment that you face with ever-changing student temperament, parental expectations, and administrative demands, both from our district as well as the state and federal level. I admire and respect each of you and your commitment to your profession and your perseverance through these trying times. And I know they're trying because of the current environment, as well as my son is also in this district. And my daughter has been through this district, and she's currently a freshman at OSU in pre-med, and that's in part due to you guys. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to make a few comments as well, and like Tina, I put my thoughts down on paper, because I'm not too familiar with it. Kind of like Gina said, you know, last month, we were introduced to our Teacher of the Year nominees, as well as a video highlighting each of these special teachers. This recognition is a highlight of our meetings, and I always look forward to the inspiring stories that exemplify the true character of our teachers and their professions. I'm always struck by the passion you have for your students and the investment you make in their lives. Often, we're guilty of seeing you as a number or a statistic only measuring your success based on test scores. However, it's obvious that the mark of a great teacher is far deeper than can be measured by test scores. I have witnessed firsthand the commitment and care you share for our students, and how you work to make a child's life just a little better, and all without any fanfare or recognition. The honor and integrity you demonstrate for our students is worth far more than can be measured by test scores. And when test scores are the only measure of success, we fail to appreciate your contribution. Tonight, I want to say thank you to all the teachers in our district that continue to come to work day in and day out, despite the poor pay, the poor work conditions, and the disrespect you feel, you continue to serve with integrity and commitment. Let me share with you some comments made by one of our teachers. Quote, "I feel like I've been going down a slide my whole education career. I started at the top where I received a budget for my class. My class sizes were small and I had more coworkers. Year by year, I have watched my budget be completely depleted, my class sizes more than double, and watched amazing coworkers flee in mass numbers to other states or careers." This teacher's statement sums up very well the state of public education and the crisis we have with low teacher pay. I'm amazed that anyone would choose to be a teacher given the educational requirements and low pay. However, I have yet to meet a teacher who's in it for the money. This says a lot about the heart of a teacher. Nonetheless, it has taken a toll on morale and have left many of you wondering if anyone cares. It's imperative that our state legislator find the means to adequately fund teacher pay raises. I'm not sure how long we can expect teachers to continue working when real wages have been declining for many years. This board recognizes that you deserve a raise, and that the demands placed on teachers is demoralizing and frustrating. It's personally frustrating for me to have watched great teachers leave the state or profession for better pay, but who can blame them? I know that despite your frustration, you will continue to honor your profession with integrity while advocating for your profession. Let us not forget the students who depend on us to be there day in and day out, and let us not fail to demonstrate to them the true character of your profession during this time of heated rhetoric and political debate. And once again, I just want to say thank you for everybody coming out, I really appreciate the comments that were made to the board, and it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Item 11, the superintendent's report.
I've got, I'm going to start
I've got, I'm going to start with some things, an update of some positive things from our students, and I'm going to address some of these issues as well. I always try to start with something positive from our students, and so I'm going to mention this. A contingent of students from the upper elementary took part in the 29th Annual Oklahoma Student Inventors Exposition on February 20th at Rose State College. Students were challenged to create inventions that solve everyday problems. In 5th grade, Malik Myers took first place with the trash taxi. In 6th grade, Elijah Maroney took second place with the candy plan, while Wyatt Long placed first with the solar saber. Congratulations to those students. I too have prepared a script. I'm going to, that's not normally my style either, but with the emotion, it's probably the safest thing for me to do right now because I tend to get on a soapbox pretty quickly. But I will preface this before I go to my script. About four years ago, we had a Guthrie High School student that was babysitting for our children. And I asked her what she wanted to do. She was a senior and I hadn't had that conversation with her. She said, "I want to be a teacher." And I'm ashamed of my first thought because my first thought was, "I don't know that that's really what you want to do." And that's as much as anything because of the political rhetoric and the respect that is lacking with our teachers in this state. I quickly recovered and told her I thought that was a great opportunity for her. And she is currently in a teacher ed program. Likewise, my own daughter, at this point of her second grade life, wants to be a teacher. And the reason she wants to be a teacher is because of the outstanding role models that she's received in Guthrie Public Schools up to this point in her educational career. Now I better go to the script. Obviously, we have been dealing with a very fluid situation between state funding and a potential suspension of classes due to our current level of education funding in Oklahoma. The last few days have been challenging at best, and I expect the coming days to be equally challenging. I want to be very clear that I support additional funding for education. When I was a college senior in student teaching at Stillwater Junior High, we were 49th in teacher pay. That was the spring of 1990 when House Bill 1017 was passed. Over the last 10 years, we have gutted most of the provisions of that landmark bill in the name of flexibility. That flexibility was needed because reductions in per pupil expenditures would no longer make adhering to those mandates possible. Also, during that time, I have watched countless quality educators either leave our state or leave the profession entirely. Enrollment in our teacher education programs will no longer support the loss we experience in staffing on an annual basis. This problem has been 10 years in the making, and many times during my superintendent's reports over the past six years, I've issued cautionary words about the growing problem. We are now back to 49th in the nation, or 50th, depending on whose information you use, and it appears the problem has reached a tipping point. My first concern will always be for our students, and my next concern will be for our staff. As I sent my letter to our staff on Friday, it's truly my hope for our students that we find a resolution before the April 2nd deadline. With the uncertainty regarding a potential work stoppage, we've been in conversations with our child nutrition department about what can be done to provide meals for our students over this time. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Guthrie Ministerial Alliance to discuss options of how they could assist our students during the upcoming days. We'll share that information with our community when the details become clearer. To the teachers, let's put education first. Thank you for being here and thank you for listening.